We bet.
Are you good now?
No, uh, I just had to say hello.
Oh, no, not her.
Come on.
Well, this, uh, yeah, it doesn't eat.
No, it's just like, right?
I don't know.
Maybe the minutes over here.
Was it genuinely a room or a gate?
On one minute.
Actually, about ten seconds.
Specifically, my goodness. Just go with the minute.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you for those waiting. We had a little technical connection. You're just waiting for us. So, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of February the thirteenth. And before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I do just want to excuse Commissioner Boatright. He is not in attendance with us this evening. And with that comment, we'll just go right ahead and get going on the agenda tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. And... Is everybody's microphone on? Yes? Okay, perfect. First, before we go into public comment, I do just want to make a little note that if anybody is here to speak specifically on Agenda Item Number Six, which is the rezone for the South Weaver Gateway, just to hold your comments until that public comment period in the public hearing. So, this is just going to be your time. If anybody has any general public comments, the time is yours. Know that you can speak for three minutes or less. Please do not remark from the audience and state your name and direct the comments to the entire commission, knowing that we will not respond. So, the time is now yours.
It's not here.
You don't have your assistants. Thank you.
Paul Sturm, South Weaver City. My public comments and questions for, as for our General Item Number Eight, Reference Package Pages thirteen and seventeen. It's for the preliminary subdivision plat for the Gateway subdivision. The purpose is administrative action preliminary subdivision plat approval. And then the final plat will be reviewed later. I have some major questions and concerns regarding some of the material presented in the package. On page thirteen of thirty-one and page seventeen of thirty-one from the staff shows information regarding the preliminary subdivision plat. The information shown on page seventeen of thirty-one is in conflict with the established zoning of CH and the existing development agreement. It categorizes the thirteen pads as condominiums. Please explain how one can propose condominiums residences in a commercial zone. The two images below show the, on the second to the last line of the first on the background, shows the thirteen commercial pads. And the one below from page seventeen shows where those thirteen pads were labeled as South Weaver Gateway condominiums. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Seeing as there's no more public comment, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. I always forget. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes from our December twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Is there any changes, comments from the commission?
No, there was none.
Okay, then can I ask for a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda from December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, starting with Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All passes. I'm moving right along. Agenda Item Number Four, I'm just going to acknowledge the reappearance. We had two open positions on the Planning Commission, and we had no one express interest in joining the Planning Commission, which I don't understand because we are just so much fun. But anyways, luckily, Commissioner Boatright and Commissioner McFadden have decided that they'd like to stay with us. And at the, you know, request of the mayor, I believe, they have, and the city council, they have been approved for a second term. So, welcome, welcome, continue. I think this is technically Gary's second full term that was his, correct, under the new rules? So, we appreciate. No, I think this might be his last one. Till he has to take a break, right? According to current rules. Yep. Okay. For a minute. So, this is his second under the three-year terms, and we appreciate his insight and knowledge, especially coming into a general plan review, since he was one of the originals who went through the process first time. You can talk to him privately about his vows. He still has them. So, with that, we're just acknowledging the appointment. Thank you for continuing to want to serve South Weaver City. And moving right into the electing of a chair and a vice chair, every year we actually get to elect a new chair and a vice chair. And I have loved serving the last two years as first the co-chair, and then I moved up into the chair position. It's been great. But I now feel it's the opportunity for somebody else on the Planning Commission to take on that role. And I know we do not have Commissioner Boatright in attendance, but he did reach out to me and say he's interested in serving in whatever capacity we felt right to put him into. I think at this point, it's just kind of an acknowledgement of who wants to maybe serve in either capacity, or if somebody wants to nominate somebody. It's kind of discussion between the commission at this point.
And that includes the code enforcement, right?
So, what, yes. So, I want to go over. So, basically, the chair and the co-chair do serve on the code committee, which requires an additional meeting one time a month. It's usually the fourth Tuesday of the month, starting about four-thirty to five-thirty, right before the city council meeting. So, the second city council meeting. Also stating that, just because the chair and the co-chair are the ones that we'd like to have in attendance, that does not preclude any of the planning commissioners from attending code committee meetings. You guys are welcome at all of those, regardless of leadership position. And then it is a one-year term, and trying to think if there was anything else. I think that was all my little notes that I had on that, so. Shall I take the reins?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna do it. And then I'm going to recommend Chad Scola to be the chair and Gary Boatright to be the co-chair, and ask for a vote on the commission. I'm gonna vote.
I'll vote, yes.
Yeah, so Commissioner Roberts?
I'm, yes.
Okay, Commissioner McFadden? Commissioner Scola?
Uh, yes.
Um, I don't know if anybody really seconded it. We're just kind of discussing, and I put it out there. So, is it a motion that needs to be made?
Yeah.
I, I, I seconded her motion.
Okay, then Marty will be my, my second.
Okay, and then on the previous item, if you would just do a motion to reappoint.
Yes, absolutely. Do we need to do a motion to reappoint? Because it's city council approval. We can do it. I'll make a motion to reappoint the acknowledgement.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we'll, we'll follow protocol, however we need to. Okay. Just an acknowledgement. Okay. Roll call vote for Commissioner Scola to be the chair and Commissioner Boatright to be the co-chair, starting with Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
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 And yes. And I believe this becomes my opportunity to transition immediately to Commissioner Scola, who now gets to take over the reins of conducting the meeting tonight. Are you ready for it? He's like stepping right into it. And this is why Gary's my guest.
Also, I need to know, what is the term for that?
It's one year.
For both? For the?
Chair and the co-chair.
No, I mean for reappearance.
Three years.
Usually in the minutes, we put the date so that we have record of when we went in.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Nope. That's perfect. Ready to switch?
Oh.
Give us just a minute to switch chairs.
Oh, we're in to share.
Actually, you know what? We don't need to switch chairs, but you are now directing the meeting.
Yeah, where's the gavel?
We don't have a gavel.
Everybody just be on your best behavior.
Don't make them come out.
Okay, then I guess we will move to Agenda Item Number Six. And I will make a motion to, or do we want to go over some notes on it first? Yeah, let's. I would appreciate that. Yes.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
So, this is a request for, I'd say for correction of the rezone. The area, if you could pull up the map. It's, it's really a technicality. The development agreement, the South Weaver Gateway Development Agreement was amended and changed, and the in the concept plan between the Second Amendment and the Fourth Amendment, the the commercial area size is very similar, but shifted in its shape. Kind of see that the, the original was in red, it went a little further south and had gone up to the north and then up South Weaver Drive along the front, obviously, the north, north portion of the commercial area. Change is just to, they've extended the commercial longer on South Weaver Drive, and it's more of a rectangular in shape. It's, it's gotten a little bit more narrow. That exhibit says it's exactly, it's one tenth, no, one hundredth of an acre smaller in the, or larger. But we just want to make sure that the zoning map matches the principles of the building. It's almost a formality. It's already proven, but only, but we want to make sure the zoning map matches up with the only flat, this kind of true.
Thank you. Now, I will make, or can I get a motion to open? Do I need to be in a motion board? Just open it. I move to open the public hearing on the rezone for South Weaver Gateway.
I'll second that motion.
Your roll call? Just all in favor?
Yes.
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 Are you public, you're gonna public hearing on the zoning?
Public hearing on the reason.
I'm Elizabeth Rice. So, I'm just trying to understand. So, I had a notice that said rezoned a point-two acre. So, we're talking itsy-bitsy, just a tiny little bit? Okay. And it isn't at the end of the property where the storage sheds are. It's the actual commercial. Okay. I, I thought that the city had point-two acres that they said was no longer needed or something, and they gave it to.
That the, the rezone is a shift just in the property itself.
Okay.
It's shifting.
Did you, did you, did the city give up a little piece that they no longer needed? Did they?
No, it's just rezoning a piece of land.
Okay. Well, I totally misunderstood the first letter. That's a different thing. Okay. Well, I'm just excited. I hope it goes forward. I've been waiting seven years.
You've been waiting very, very long. Thank you, Liz.
There's nobody else, then I will move to close the public hearing on the rezone.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Moving along. So, Agenda Item Number Seven. Oh. Oh, yeah, we do need to on that. Oh, yeah, let's discuss it then.
I'm, I'm gonna.
I was finding.
That is number seven.
Yeah, right?
We're, we're doing good. Now you're good. Now it's our chance to discuss this.
Yeah, so. Yeah, does anyone have anything on?
I, I have no issues with this.
I actually appreciate the clarification, because at one point, I do know that this parcel that the city just gave up in the last commission or council meeting that is located by the storage unit, I was confused. And I thought maybe that was somehow shifting what was happening here. But having that explanation and seeing that it literally was just, in fact, if you guys can pull up that graphic again, because I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. The red was what was previously approved in the second revision, and what's in black, which you can't really see, but it is more of a more rectangular section, that is the amended kind of eight hundred square feet change that it's being requested for the rezone tonight. Okay. Yeah, I have no problems with it. All within the existing development.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And then just address the comment earlier that I think that they're just commercial condominiums in space.
We'll talk about that with the plat.
Oh, we'll talk about that later.
This is just the rezone for that point zero-two, I believe. Isn't it point zero-two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council. The rezone of South Weaver Gateway Development Agreement at approximately twenty-four, twenty-five South Weaver Drive, applicant South Weaver City.
I'll second that. And then, yeah, we'll do a roll call. Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
And then, let's see. So, that will move. So, do you, do you want to, do you have anything you want to say on this, then?
Sure, I can cover. If you just walk through this.
Yeah, let's do it. Oh. Oh, yeah.
Plus.
We're gonna read the news.
That's because you slide to the side now, and it pops up.
It was lagging. I was noticing, so. Between what's being said. Okay. Are we back on?
So, so this is a preliminary plat request for the six acres. It's filing, it's the preliminary plat application for the development agreement. They are plating out the lots for the fifty-seven townhomes and the commercial area of two-point-six acres. Just to kind of walk through the process that we're going through here. So, initially, the kind of it's a five-step process, where we did the zoning entitlements, was the development agreement and the zoning. Those are clarified and approved by the Department of Mission City Council for the fifty-seven units and all those elements that are in that development. That made the property, that gave those rights for development. This is the subdivision plat process, which is two steps. One is a preliminary plat that is going to get before all the details of the infrastructure, proof of plans, the grading, the nitty-gritty, and there's quite a bit there. It's just in a packet. So, that sets it up for those lots and those key conditions. If this is approved by the planning commission, and then it follows the requirements, we see the total resharing. That, that plat would be approved and reported. And then, sometimes we overlap the plus and the minus of the site plan. We didn't have that level of detail yet. So, there'll be another step when the actual building permits come in to verify that they meet the architectural and site plan requirements for both the commercial and the residential. They're somewhat dictated already in the development agreement, but the further look at that. Also, and then we have the two-point-six acres of commercial that's planted in those two lots in the front. Depending on how those come in, because again, we don't know the details, we don't know the tenants, the uses. If it's, they will have these uses that are compliant with the commercial. Each of those units might have a different use. Each of those would be approved as those tenant finishes or the overall building comes in. There's some, some issue there. If, if anything over an acre comes in to be developed, and then if you take these two phases down one at a time, those that would require conditional use permits. With those land use approvals, that the item brought up concerning the condominium plat, the state code defines condominium as a formal ownership. It's ownership of a single unit in a multi-unit project together with an undivided interest with common area and facilities. So, traditionally, everybody thinks of that as residential, because that's where they just kind of don't talk about the fact that there's a lot of commercial flats or condominium uses. So, if there's a concern there, we could add just the word "commercial condominium" or something. Technically, it's, it's, it's not residential. The, the residential use is the zoning and the development agreement. It's tied there, or the residential is commercialized. So, that's hopefully not an issue. It's, it's, it's kind of not the common terminology that most people are used to fully understand that, but it technically is correct. Anyway, so, and that's that issue. Staff is reviewed and is working on the details of the, as we've seen, the chart, the workup to all our elements. We've got all those things. Open any questions?
I, I just only had one question because of when last time this came up, we had the gym owner from Brigham or Logan or wherever in here. Was that still anything that was on the table that would affect the plat of any sort or anything? Okay. Okay. I just wanted. Oh. Well, that worked out really well.
Good evening, Commissioner. Justin Nielsen, still our construction group. Happy to be here and happy to answer any questions that you may have. We're really excited about this project. It's fully vetted, and, and we're ready to move on it based on our, our approval process and making sure that everybody's happy with the your whole project. So, anything I can do to answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Did you want to ask your?
Yeah, there's a couple of questions. One was the back of the wall. Are we going to retain the wall or have that hillside? How does that, how do we hold back that?
That's a good question. We're going to be doing both. There's a portion of it is retained, and there's a portion of it that's going to be vegetation, and, and more so, we're on the, where the trailhead is on the other side. A trail will be improved and, and solidified, and that will have some, some balance to it. And then further, as we go towards the west of the property, there is retainment there as, as it gets a little tighter on, around the back edge. It is called out on all our construction drawings and plans, and that's part of it. It's already been reviewed, and that, but there will be some retainment as well as vegetation.
They'll do another, like a geotechnical report or something at the end.
So, the geotech originally was done and correctly proposed there. Andy with CMT is going to be helping us with, with the additional information. As we looked at it, took some measurements, that wall height, we all kind of uniformly agreed that it probably would be a foot taller than, than what it was originally spec'd out, just to be safe.
So, how high?
It's, it's six to eight feet at the top, the highest part. Don't quote me there, because I'm going off the memory on multiple projects, but it's roughly six to eight feet with the new settings. We've already been in touch with CMT, and they are already giving us an update there for the city. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, that that's the end all with the wall. When we build the wall, we'll have the engineers there onsite. We'll have CMT there onsite, making sure that we see everything correctly, that's being built correctly.
And then with the, so there's thirteen units proposed, but there's an option if somebody came in and wanted one, three or four spaces that that thirteen could turn into four theoretically.
Yeah.
Right?
So, so to your point there, we've done a number of commercial condominium projects over the year. We love them for a couple of reasons. And two, two of the main reasons is that it allows some flexibility with our commercial use, but it also then puts another check and balance in from the city side that requires us to submit, once we know who the tenant is, or we know how many units they want, we then submit to the city for review. They get a final check or an additional check on the project. So, we know exactly what that building's going to look like, the aesthetics of it, the size, the height, all the details, right down to percentages. And so, that's the, that's the benefit of the commercial condominium project, is that it does allow for a tenant, as they come forward, to be able to accommodate the building's size, design, layout. If they need two or three or four, we can accomplish that. And then, once that information is gathered and collected, we have the design team do their part, and then we resubmit to the city for approval. So, hopefully that answered your question, but that's, yes, the answer is yes, but that's the reason why we do it.
Couple of small questions. Is there, and I don't know the answer to this, is there any fencing or I want to call between the commercial and residential?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that there's a line everywhere on this, but I don't know what that was. The fence or what do you put between?
There's fencing.
Okay.
Is it just fencing?
So, so Lance has a, a good pulse on that.
Because I know at one point, the conversation was that there would be kind of like a raised berm with fencing and landscaping, but I don't know if I'm just remembering a previous iteration.
I remember that, too.
So, just something to give more of a buffer between the commercial, especially because the residences will be facing the backside of these buildings. We want to make sure we're giving them the better view, not necessarily, you know.
And like a, I don't like a. And like a, I don't like a vinyl fence, I don't want like a chain link fence.
No chain link, yeah, I don't think chain link is allowed.
We couldn't agree with you more.
Okay.
We we see the same vision on our project.
Are you planning for a vinyl fence or are you planning for, okay? You know the wind in that area.
No.
It's mostly going with the wind.
Some reinforced. I I was wondering if it was a masonry fence.
Okay.
A six foot to my.
Because it it the um buffer yard is gonna be.
Oh, yes.
That's a good, and it's a good point, Brandon, thanks. So we're we're gonna do it.
Yes.
And then the only last question, I know we've had um issues in the past with the row, the main road landscaping. Where technically I think it's on like UDOT's side. Who maintains that or is an agreement to maintain those trees and stuff?
Well, traditionally, well, UDOT won't.
Right. Yes. Well, that's my worry, isn't it, you know that, yeah.
Um no, it will it will be, it will fall on our side and our our responsibility. Usually it's the it's the organization of parent ownership of the the. Con ground in the commercial side of it. That's usually how that's maintained. That's how we do it on all of our other commercial stuff. So there will be an organization and it's probably obviously on our side that maintains all of that commercial landscaping and all that.
Yeah, I know we've had issues right across the street where then in trees die and it's kind of falls away side.
The obligation is on us. It won't be on the city, nor will it be on.
And I'm glad you actually brought that up, the landscaping, because right now I know the sidewalk all along South Weaver Drive, there is actually no buffer.
Correct.
Yard, so you guys will be tearing out the current sidewalks, existing sidewalks and moving them away from South Weaver Drive to permit. And put in a buffer yard, because it looks like from the landscaping plan.
But that is up to UDOT. David will be making that call on their side as far as their.
They'll allow it.
Now, what we do after that, obviously, we have a voice in, but.
Okay.
UDOT will be requiring us to to stick to their standards. I can tell you in the past that if they do require a park strip, that park strip grows.
Mm-huh.
Usually larger than normal than the traditional standard city park strip. Uh but with it not having one now, I I don't know that that David would would make that change. I think he would require us to to just landscape.
On the other side of the sidewalk, keeping the existing sidewalk where it's at. Just and my only concern there is because I know right now when the snow removal happens, it buries the sidewalk. And obviously you have a buffer yard and a buffer of park strip to maybe, you know, take on that snow overflow. So you're not blocking the sidewalk as much. Um that's just something I have a concern with, but I guess if UDOT's the one that weighs in on that, when do we find out what their two senses?
Reviewed and looked at everything and and they'll just, they'll just review final construction plans. But they've already given us that. Keep in mind, they've already approved this project once.
Oh, yeah.
We've asked them to come back and update and give us an updated fresh approval.
Okay.
We've had our meeting with them. There's no concerns that they have moving forward. I I really suspect that we'll see that park strip and this is just a perspective, right?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I think that they'll leave their sidewalk where they're at. And then require us to have a landscape barrier between sidewalk and our parking. And then that's where that will take place and be managed on our side.
Okay.
That's really what I see happening.
Just so there's not the understanding, but what we saw this park strip here and this is expected to be here, like there, the way that it exists currently is the sidewalk really is right at the the curb. Um it's, there's not a park strip currently in place. Um. I had a question about the phasing, there's just gonna be the two phases, correct?
Yes, we're gonna do phase one, which is the east side.
Okay.
Phase two, which is the west.
And it's commercial and residential at the same time, we're not doing one.
So.
Hoping to rent it out and then.
Requires us to do both.
I remembered that part, so I wanted to make sure that hadn't disappeared. So. Any other question?
I think it's, I think it's great and I am, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, you guys have done even a good job at the one snowstorm we had at keeping your sidewalk.
Well, what number two's happening right now, so.
Number two, so we'll see, I'll I'll ask, I'll check again tomorrow, but.
Yeah.
But no, I appreciate it, I mean, yeah, it was, it was better maintained.
Yes.
This year than it, than it has in a long time, so.
Guys, we're we're really excited about this project. We we've done a lot in the past in the parts of of uh town and and we just really are grateful for opportunity to come. And and provide a what we consider a really nice little addition to the city. And that's really what our goal is, right? It's uh it's providing a place to, and I get, I get flack on this all the time, that's cliched, I know, but. We do want a place where people can raise their families and enjoy life and and have a quality of life and add to the, add to the uh program versus be a be a problem or an issue. So that's our our true goal with this and we feel like this project is a great one to do.
Yeah. Yeah, we appreciate it.
And I like that there's at least the three line or three lanes, two exits, one entrance. Um that's gonna be your major flow. And I saw on the plat, the street and the painting and all that stuff, that's all been approved with UDOT for turn lanes and things like that going into and out of.
Yes.
Um is there gonna be anything in terms of signage? And I don't know if this is appropriate to do it or when we actually have the um. The plat.
Plaid.
And the site plans.
We are saying.
Signage in terms of turning, because again, we know we've got an issue there with Highmark Charter School Parents parking all along South Weaver Drive. And making sure people are not parking in. Turn lanes and turning.
That'd be bad for you.
That's all by UDOT. Okay, has that conversation been had yet?
They they're very well.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's been brought up. Because I know it's gonna be a problem, although I will say thank you for putting off the parking along South Weaver Drive, because I have a feeling it's gonna be filled in with parents waiting to pick up their kids, just forewarning you.
Well, you know, that's that's that's.
Just say as long as you frequent one of the commercial spaces in between, I know Maverick, they always go to Maverick to grab a, you know, refreshment while they're waiting for their kids until they start kicking them out of the parking lot, maybe now it'll help. Support the businesses that we have.
And we have a project in West Hager next to an elementary school and we have a commercial project next to it. It's and and all it's. It's always full with kids, parents going to to an event or whatever it's.
Do you have anybody earmarked for any of the commercial space?
What's that?
You can share, anybody earmarked that's expressed interest in the commercial space businesses?
No.
Nothing yet?
No, no, we yeah, we'd like to say we, I don't, I don't really like committing to something that I know I can't deliver on or on our timeframe, timeline. We're gonna get things in the ground and make sure that we have some some of our, you know, initial homework done and then we'll open up.
Okay.
And we're gonna, we we traditionally are are pretty picky on who we put in our commercial spaces, just because, you know, their businesses add to to the. The city's balance and so we're we're, we don't jump the gun there, I guess, is what I'm saying. So we're gonna bet those potential, uh you know, possibilities a little closer as we get a little closer, but we've got, we got a lot of work to do before we can. That started and and start, you know, confirming tenants.
Anything else?
Not on the preliminary flat?
No. Can I get a motion?
Actually, can I make the motion?
Yeah.
Because there was only one thing that I want to say about it.
Absolutely.
Where's my? Okay, so I'm going to um recommend approval with an additional condition. Um and that condition is that I would like the um labeling um on the documents. To read instead of gateway condominiums, to read gateway commercial condominiums. On any future, when this goes before city council and just going forward, because I want it to be very clear um that it's not. Residential, this is a commercial condominium use. Then everything else I would recommend for approval to the city council for that preliminary subdivision plot for the gateway subdivision. Um at approximately twenty-four, twenty-five South Weaver Drive applicant Justin Nielsen was still water construction, just with that minor adjustment.
I second. The motion. And we'll do roll call vote, yeah?
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Who cares?
You got. On a side note.
Yeah.
Our documents that we have submitted to the city does have a commercial condominium.
Perfect.
Plating is already done that way, something that we pay attention to, so we'll make sure that we accommodate.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Now it looks like we're doing some training of some sort.
Yeah, I um wasn't sure what you guys wanted to go over. I thought it was because we just had a training. Yeah.
Yeah.
That guy.
That guy.
No, I do not.
I'm gonna stay right here.
Anyway, this is too small. But anyway, um so I I my thought was at least we could just kind of briefly go over the chapter three of the of the code. It's title ten, chapter three, planning commission duty. And just kind of, I I I don't want to get into it, I I just need to highlight overview of kind of. Fresher.
Right.
And then we could discuss bylaws if you'd like and get more to that, but.
Brandon, we excuse you.
Uh this is another.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
I think you can pause. Well. What's probably.
Yeah, see it.
So I'm gonna just, I've just got some highlight notes, I'm just gonna run down. Feel free to interrupt and we can go into the code and actually recheck sections if you want, but I mean, section one is just that we are free to understate code, the planning commission is created. It's an advisory council to the city council on planning and zoning matters. It's got five members. Planned by the mayor with his counsel consent. Uh members receive reimbursement for reasonable expenses like training and things like that, so that is then proposed as an option. I'm just gonna think about it. The Utah American Planning Association has training as the spring conference in Logan. It's pretty expensive, if you want to go, it's a couple. Plan and commission members is seventy-five dollars.
We have the dates on that? No? You'll put it out, though?
Yeah.
And isn't that one that the city has budget reserved to cover the cost for planning commission members? Is my understanding?
Did, but I haven't actually seen it, so what we should have.
It was my understanding that they were covered because it's considered CE training for us.
Yes.
So we did get uh an email in our um. Inboxes, uh so this is, so spring conference session registration closes on February sixteenth.
Oh. Wow.
Which is Sunday.
Quick.
Okay, so.
So you need to let Lance know by tomorrow.
Yes, yeah.
You want to go.
Do you have dates on it?
Yeah, it is May seventh through the ninth.
That February sixteenth is for uh session proposals.
Oh.
That's way too early.
The deadline, submit your, yeah, that's right.
I really hope that that's not right.
Yeah, submit your spring conference session today.
Session proposals, gotta.
Nevermind.
Okay, all right, so yeah, they made that.
Don't, yeah, if you want to go.
So May seventh through ninth.
Yeah, May seventh through ninth.
And this is like that one that we, most of us went to a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. And it's Logan, Logan. Cash Valley's got really cool, you know, city planning stories up there.
Okay.
And it is May seventh through the ninth for the actual session?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to make it to that if I can.
I will, I plan to.
I'm gonna get my my company to.
I don't know days they are, but.
You know, allow me to do that.
I just want to show up those days.
Thanks.
Oh, it's in the middle of the week, that's perfect.
So, yeah, those, you do have that that.
Okay.
Your scope is uh you're responsible for reviewing and recommending actions on land use and zoning changes. Street modifications regarding winding, abandonment, extensions, relocation, uh public buildings, parks and open spaces. And subdivision of land in utility classes. So. Terms, three years. Former members must wait a year before appointment, staggered terms, partial in partial terms over eighteen months, counts full terms. May be removed uh by at least seventy-five if you're, no, members must attend seventy-five percent of the meetings. Uh I know that's. Sort of been a challenge and I I know we have.
Lance, but that's not an issue if the city does not hold the meeting, that does not count against the commissioner if they have a meeting that they cannot attend, correct?
Probably percentage goes down.
That's it, new new planning commission, everybody go home.
I think on the powers and duties, I find it a little bit interesting, you have the authority to interlamp for examination and surveys. And so the main duties are prepare and recommend general plans and amendments. Recommend land use ordinances, maps and subdivision regulations, review and recommend subdivision applications, advise the council as directed. Here inside conditional use permits, so that's the conditional use permits. On public hearings, um whatever the land use authority for South Weaver City, so we hold a public hearing here, that's where we develop a testimony. And then it's just reported to the record.
It's good refresher.
Good refresher. Public hearings and provide reports on city plant matters, recommend public improvement uh programs. We have a great team that takes care of this. That's just, I'm gonna ask the chapter two, planning permission, anything anybody wants to bring up or discuss? Will that preliminary flat will not come to council, right? No, yeah, so your recommended approval, it's we're approving.
We are approving it. That's right, just preliminary. This is why we need to hear Blair.
Hey, I'm just saying.
Thank you. Because now it doesn't go.
Our, it's, it was, it was written on.
Yeah.
Man, a cheat sheet was wrong.
Who's, who writes the cheat sheet?
I mean, I wouldn't. I remember that. Preliminary class, I'll come to council.
That's true, they don't, because that change was a recent change, so.
That's a, that's a a great change.
Do we need to go back and adjust anything with that being the case?
I don't think so.
The intention was there.
I can just put it.
Okay.
We proved it.
Um on the bylaws, um. The point duties of the chair and vice chair, uh three people per forum, I don't know, it's not terribly exciting.
I have a question, and I think it was just something that kind of came up about that. Um as I know that we've got with the chair and the co-chair who attend code committee meeting, right now it's just a general rule. It's not a procedure, correct? Or am I having those reversed? How do we make that a requirement? Because I know we've discussed about it.
The ones that go.
Mm-hmm. How do we make that so that any future commission that comes on board, they know that if you assume the chair or the co-chair roles, that that is an expectation? It's not just a, hey, if we remember to mention it, it is actually in our bylaws. How do we add that to it? Just amend the bylaws? Is that an official motion that we need to do?
Do you have to have someone else go if you amend?
Well, because like that's what we've been doing is like either.
Yeah.
One or the other, I mean, when we've had times where we couldn't, but even if, I mean, it probably be beneficial that.
We offer the opportunity to sub if somebody wants to.
We hope to have two, just because I think it helps the discussion and obviously there's communication between the chair and the co-chair and, you know. Formerly Chad and I both did it, so and it was just if he could make it or if I could make it, we just texted each other, you know? But I do think it would be smart if you know you can't go and there's a big code section revision or something that's going on. And like, that's why I mentioned, you know, it's okay for anybody on the planning commission to attend, you know? You want my two cents, I think we should all be in those code committee meetings. You know, just from a learning standpoint or just being able to understand our city code. I mean, I'm sure none of you are sitting home reading it. No, no. Oh, that's true, because it's the forum, never mind.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why we have the chair.
If you're critical, you could reach out and say.
To somebody else.
Or if somebody wants to go, you can ask.
And is there an agenda that comes out every, no, you don't know really?
I don't think we've gotten to that point with code committee yet, having agendas. Unofficially, we're we're trying, like some dates, some meetings better than others.
Some money have a detailed agenda, I don't follow.
Yeah, and we swirl, so it happens. Swirling is a thing.
And I don't know if you want to put in here that this is how it shall be.
Mm-hmm. Or is it okay keeping it how it is?
Your commitments are not, they're not mandatory either, so control may not all.
Yep, that's true.
So if you put it actually in your bylaws.
Then it.
I, I think if, if we were, if we were seeing an issue with it, I think that there would be.
With the tenders and things like that.
But I think that it's been running well in the, in the current status that it's in. Yeah.
But I'm happy and you're happy to.
Me too.
Yeah. I think it's good to know that the expectation is there, you know, and as long as commissioners understand that, hey, you might get called upon.
Yeah.
Well, and, and like Gary is out of town, you know, semi frequently. So he, he may need some.
He did commit that he would be more present for meetings. I know that was conversation. Well, this was one meeting. He was like, I'm so sorry. I was like, the one meeting you couldn't be at. It happens. We get it. We all have lives.
We have to have three total here.
Three in order to have a forum to make a vote. If we ever only have two, then anything that's on the agenda.
Or you zoom in like, you zoom in like I did that one time.
Do we still have that as an option? I, I know since we kind of are getting further away from COVID era times, do we still have the option for Zoom and adding in Zoom? If somebody can't be present physically, they can still zoom in?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd rather do that than not have a meeting.
Yeah, I remember like last time I did that was twenty twenty-two.
Gary did it.
I still run pulling up the old meetings where it's everybody's faces. It's like the Partridge Family. Lance is like, what? Just go back over any of the videos.
I think there's, it talks about the meeting schedule, procedure, consideration of agenda items. So introduction by spit by the chair, staff presentation, analysis, presentation of the proposal by the applicant, public hearing as applicable, mission discussion, promotion of votes. Same thing similar to public hearings. Uh, I thought it was interesting on the point on the public hearings. Uh, rebuttal and concluding comments by the applicant. So there's the public hearing shall be open, testimony by the citizens. And then the rebuttal and concluding comments by the applicant as burden of proof rest with the applicant. He's a good bit of an explanation. That's why they did a lot of work. They need to try and prove or not prove.
Answer address.
Well, and, and I think that it's, it's worthy to mention, uh, you know, in the trainings that I've had within the past year and a half, two years. There has been a real emphasis on making sure to distinguish the difference between public outcry and evidence. Because we don't make decisions on public outcry or, you know, we make decisions based on what has been submitted.
I would love a refresher on that just because it happens.
Well, I'm just saying it's a public comment section at the beginning. You're gonna hear some comments and some are valid, some are not, whatever. We want to address them, but we're not trying to. Doing it quite private or I think it's all open.
Right.
But I think if you sit there and, and, you know, you hear something that's like, well, those holes should be. Clarify that, well, um, that was, you know, call it out and just say, that is not an element that we can address. It's not in the code. And helps educate the public, helps everybody, you know, on record that that's not part of our decision. The public clamor part is, is. And so unless there's evidence and all that, you can call that out during your deliberation. Hurt this, but it's not really evidence. It's more of an opinion.
And, and we did discuss at one point, maybe having like a sentence that we say like, we're here to discuss code and those kind of items. You know, just to educate. A lot of people don't know that it could be the worst place ever, but it meets code. I'm sorry.
Yep. If it meets the approved use of the zone, there's, there's not a lot we can say.
Right.
And.
Kind of emphasize that maybe.
There's a lot of education that needs to happen.
Thank you.
Uh, the motions.
Yes, thank you for the cheat sheet. Whoever does those.
Um, I did have a question about the agendas. I feel like we're missing information and I don't know if it's just changing and evolving. Um, but before I, I feel like there was more of like public hearing for rezone. I feel like there was missing descriptions as to what the actual reason was. And then even kind of getting into the actual then rezone, I always feel like there was like ordinance information and I don't know, more detail. And I don't know if that's just an evolvement of the agenda. Am I the only one that's noticed that? Just on the agenda?
These action items here.
Like the action items and the things like, I don't know why. I just feel like there's stuff missing that I've seen on previous agendas.
I, I, I feel the same.
You do? Okay, good.
Yeah, there used to be a little bit, I mean, I don't know if it matters, but there used to be more detail.
Description, yeah.
Yeah, description on what was like, you could almost, I just felt like when you were reading the motion, if you read it from here, there was a lot more.
Detail. And I think for just.
I can't think of an example right now.
On the agenda. Well, and I can, like right now on agenda item number six, where it says, you know, public hearing for rezone, like I see that, but there's no detail being given. And I think had there been, you know, just a very brief, you know, rezone of, you know, point zero two acres from.
Case in point, I have, I have one from November of, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. The action items are full of a lot more information about that specific action item. Uh, you know, like for instance, uh, this doesn't say just public hearing. It says, public hearing and action on preliminary plat improvement plans and rezone for South Bench Meadows subdivision parcel blah, 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 approximately two point one six nine acres located approximately seventeen twenty-one east South Weaver Drive by applicant John Wall. There was, it, it gave, it gave a lot more description to the audience when we read it. Um, so that like when we like say, hey, we're doing a public hearing for this. The public is like, okay, that is what we're talking about. It's not just, now we're gonna, you know, you know, in the moment. A, a, as, as Julie was saying here, if we're just like saying, okay, we'd like to open the public hearing for rezone. Now, this was a very simple meeting and there was only one rezone and everybody who was here, there was a very small crowd. And there was an assumption that we all knew what that rezone was, but there was, if, if this wasn't, if there was like maybe three rezones on here. Th- that lacked the specificity of saying, what is this rezone regarding?
And, and the parcel is a very specific location as opposed, as opposed to approximate address for something as well. Should something come up about? You know, anything like, oh, well, I, you were said approximately here, but if it's, I, I just like if we're mentioning the parcel specifically, like even if you're inaccurate on what your address, approximate address was that. It was that parcel. There's no question.
This does say approximately.
But if you take out the parcel part, you're just saying approximately seventeen twenty-one. So it's like, well, is it seventeen twenty-eight? Now, when you get them done. I don't know. I just feel like the parcel makes it. Yeah. Even though it's, even though it's a little more difficult to know what, find it, but it's, it just, it just keeps it a little more.
Especially because the agenda items, when you're thinking about how these are being searched, they're not going into the packets. They're not going into the minutes. They're going into the agenda.
That's true.
And they're seeing what was discussed at this state. I just think it's going to be helpful, you know?
Yeah.
Again, operating in full view of the public so that everybody can see.
Trying to change, but yeah. Good call.
I, I do want to say that the public hearing for rezone. Is that the next item explains what that was.
Sure.
And that's how the state reporters.
Want it.
Wanted.
Oh.
So that's why it's listed that, I don't remember, six is the public hearing for a rezone.
Is it seven?
And then, and then.
Seven explains that is the agenda item. Then the next agenda item is now we're gonna discuss everything.
But could that be like number seven become, you know, PC discussion and action?
Well, what you could do, what you could do is just like what we've done in the past, similar to public hearing for.
Da, 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 da.
Okay, you can have that as the agenda item as well, you know, on the agenda. And then the following one, you could put action on.
Action on the rezone.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that. So.
That, that kind of gets you to hint, you guys to hint that there needs to be action taking place, which means in action, action really needs motion.
Motion.
We need all the help we can get.
Practice makes perfect and pay, and it's okay if we stumble as we all know.
Yeah.
We're here to help each other. So.
Yeah, I mean, that, that adds more clarity to the whole public, uh, you know, participation here.
I think we need to do a better job about soliciting and getting people that want to apply, since I think the last two rounds of planning commission, we haven't had too many applicants.
Where do they notify?
I don't know.
I, I think I saw it on board when I.
Okay. Newsletter.
How'd you find it?
Was it on the marquee?
I think so.
Oh, that's it.
I actually do remember, I remember seeing, uh, apply for planning commission. Yeah.
Nice.
Do you guys, who programs that by the way? No, sorry squirrel. Shaylee does. Okay. Okay, I'm just curious. You're like, I don't know. Yeah, just in case we want to know who's in charge of the lights.
And, and the decoration? Is this who's?
No, I like.
No, I just know somebody was complaining about the lights. So she was testing them there like to see if they were colored blind. It's like, what color is this cam?
I only have one thing for you. And I, it could have got done, but I know that the storage units have been, they were so cooperative with everything, but on that one snowstorm that we did have. They didn't show, they're the only ones that didn't ever shovel. Yeah. And I only noticed because like when I'm leaving and I'm watching kids walk in the morning and I, I just, I feel like I have to sit there and wait till they get past it. So if I need to get out and do something, like, cause it just turns the, that wind just turns into solid ice afterwards. But even, um, you know, the corner lot right there coming down the hill, like that usually gets done pretty quick. And then that's why I shouted them out. Cause I noticed that they had shoveled their walk pretty early on, not like the next day or something. So anyway, just, that was just note for you. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They're really helpful with that. So maybe they just missed that or weren't, yeah. So I just thought I'd just bring that one up. We haven't had a meeting for a while. That was like four meetings ago.
Probably. That was when our, our last snowstorm happened. At the beginning of winter. Now we're going to spring and it's finally started snowing.
This whole time. I could have emailed you, but whatever.
I don't have a report, but I have a question. Um, I'm just curious. So the construction that's obviously going along, um, the highway along eighty-nine and the piping and everything that's going in, we've got that section of it's owned by the city and it's basically being used as the staging zone. Um, right where twenty-seven hundred turns into eighty-two hundred. Who's maintaining that site? Because it's starting to look really, really trashy and like, um, no, this is further south. So as you're, is it UDOT? Is there a way that we could reach out to them and just in terms of making sure that that site stays a little more maintained? Okay. Okay. Cause I just know that corner is becoming really just with mud, with runoff, with debris, with just random construction junk. Um, and it's starting to become an eyesore for the residents in that neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
And I can't think of the name of the road. What's the road west of this soccer? No, the west or the, excuse me, north of it. The last road down there.
Harper.
Yeah, Harper. Was there not? Like I swear, we talked about it at some point, but maybe I'm remembered incorrectly that construction vehicles were not supposed to be solely using that road. Was there anything? On that, I've just received.
For general RV?
I don't know who's using. I've just been, had people tell me that they said they just see construction in and out of that all day long. And I'm just like, I swear that like we talked about them going around and coming down from the other side, but maybe I'm, maybe it was two different projects. So I just wanted to at least ask about it to see if, if. Yeah, and, and maybe it just is what it is, but I, I just know that we had thought about that before this started that, and we'd talked about them, you know, coming in off of South Weaver Drive. And I get that, I mean, I, last time I was down there, I see that there's work going on. I just don't know if it's, if it's being as minimized as it could be. I don't know. Okay.
Is that Nielsen Homes? That's Riverwood. And what's the other subdivision that's over there? That's not the only one that's be under construction and like, okay. And then just the public works, right? Okay. And RV parking. That's the other part. Okay. Okay. They shouldn't.
Yeah, I knew one we were specific on not using.
It was that one. You could not use it.
Yeah, yeah, that was supposed to be, yeah, locked up.
And I've had people bring it up and I just thought, well, I'll bring it up and ask again to make sure I'm clear on what it was or wasn't supposed to be. I mean, I know that nobody down there really likes, I mean, I get it and I understand, but.
Yeah.
You know, if it, it doesn't need to be made worse than what it needs to be either.
So maybe a reminder that, hey, access.
Oh.
But they do now.
Okay. Okay.
And they can't. And they can't asphalt till it gets warm. So it's just a muddy mess.
Oh, I believe it.
That's what we're down there. And then. I mean, I, I don't live over there, but I just want to point out, I think that general RV has turned out really well. And I think it's looking pretty good. I don't, I, I don't live in that area. So I don't know if the traffic's been any worse than what they predicted it would be. I get that they're stocking right now, so it's going to be what it is until they stop. They got their signs up. I'm hoping that.
I need to go over there and take a look. The last night.
Yeah, I think, I think it's looking, looking super good. I hope that they don't keep up their banners on the road, but whatever. Other than that, I think it looks great.
Yeah, it looks good. Traffic's not, the workers get there at eight and leave at five, like on the dot. Other than that, I mean, that's too bad.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think. Over there, I don't, I haven't noticed any, yeah, adverse difference.
Oh, yeah. I don't notice it's that bad. I mean.
It's not intrusive at all. Really?
You couldn't even tell it was there.
Yeah.
Until the RVs got there and then it started rolling off of the.
Off of the RVs.
But it's not bad at all.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Well, it goes off the RVs now.
Yeah, I could, I didn't think about that happening.
There was zero light.
Cause it hit the asphalt.
And it's, and it might be, the general army lighting is pretty prominent, but.
But their landscaping is not done yet and obviously not going to be done until we get into that season. That will help hopefully diffuse a little bit.
Oh, cause there're gonna be some trees and stuff. I think that we, I mean, they'll be little for a while, but.
They had a lot of, yeah.
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 Hopefully they'll put some miracle grow on it and, you know, we'll get some good weather conditions.
Hey, if I could, um, if I could, there was a, a comment, uh, that was entered that, uh, there was, I, I don't know if it was today, but they asked to, to bring it up. Somebody, um, asked if we could consider moving the flashing lights for the school zone. Um, that's over here. Uh, so it's further west or excuse me.
Further west.
Further west on Lester Drive, because there's a portion of the street front, uh, in front of the K, K building. Uh, uh, that people are moving much faster than they should with kids. Anyway, I, I felt like there was an obligation to bring it up.
Was that submitted to public comment?
Yeah, they, they emailed us today.
So, you know.
Is it on South River Drive or the one?
It's on Lester.
Lester Drive.
Because they're saying just the people are using that other road first. There's no lights on that west side.
Okay.
Cause that's where we pull indicate.
Yep, to go around the K two.
So.
Is, that's a city change, correct? That's not a UDOT or any requirement. That's just city road. Is, that's a city change, correct? That's not a UDOT or any requirement, that's just city road?
Let's see. New entry.
Here's a reminder, parents, we all have kids that go to school here, slow down.
Well, I mean, like, I, I, I can say that, like, those, I mean, the school zone here in South Weaver is incredibly small.
That is true.
I mean, e- even on South Weaver Drive, but, but like, over by the school, I mean, I've got kids over there, I, you know, and anything that we can do that, that could potentially make that easier.
Safer.
Yeah, safer.
Keep them safe.
You know, if, i- if it's relocating, uh, I know that's, that's not, uh, all you gotta do is, but it's, you know, I mean, I think it's a legitimate thing to, to bring up to whatever body ought to consider that. I don't feel like we're the exact body to bring, to, to discuss that, though.
Is it more extending the school zone, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, because like, I mean, if you can envision, if you're looking south of the school on Lester Drive, you've got, you know, the school property, and you've got a flashing light that's here, and it could be over here to encompass.
Empty the space.
Yeah.
I do, can I make the motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
I move to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
A second. We tied, but give it to me.
All in favor.
You can have.
Yeah, yes, yes.
That was my last act. No, I'm already out.